Isn't that six o'clock yet? Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM and I'd like to officially call the Rockdale County Board of Education Work Session to order. Thank you all for being here tonight. I want to extend a special welcome to our staff, students, families, and guests. We truly appreciate your presence and participation. This evening, we will begin with a moment of silence in honor of two valued members of the Rockdale County Public School community whom we have lost recently. We remember Brandon Pena Fargus, a sixth grader student at Edwards Middle School, and Kathy Hall, a dedicated bus driver who faithfully served Rockdale County Public School for more than 28 years. On behalf of Rockdale County Public School, we extend our deepest condolences to their families and friends. We ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers during this time of loss. So we'll take a brief moment of silence. Amen. Do I have motion to approve the agenda as presented? The second? A motion approved the agenda as presented has been made by Vice Chair Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved by a 7-0 vote. Next, Ms. Ball will share highlights of the remarkable achievement of our scholars and staff. Board members and Superintendent Chess, I invite you to join me in a special recognition as we celebrate excellence, dedication, and inspired contribution that strengthen and enrich our school community.
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, our board members, our superintendent, and our guests. Welcome this evening. I'm gonna do the picture by school. Before we move to athletics, we're gonna start with academics. The Georgia Department of Education, or known as GDO, recently announced literacy leader schools and math leader schools. The statewide literacy leader and math leader distinctions celebrate schools that demonstrate extraordinary student progress and proficiency. Schools are recognized for achievement, growth, or both on annual end-of-grade or end-of-course milestones assessments. The criteria recognize the crucial importance of grade-level reading in third and sixth grades, and numeracy skills in fifth and eighth grades, and require higher growth from schools with lower achievement levels. Tonight, we will begin by recognizing D.L. Sims Elementary School for being named a literacy leader for third-grade gateway growth. And again, I don't know if you heard me, but that was for third-grade gateway growth. We'll take picture for sense. Congratulations. Next, we will recognize another elementary school for being named a literacy leader school for third-grade gateway growth, Lorraine Elementary. Congratulations. Our next school is a math leader school for high school growth, Memorial Middle School. One, two, three. Here, one, two, three. Congratulations. And now, we're gonna switch to athletics. As part of the Atlanta Falcons Coach of the Week program presented by Nike, the NFL, the Atlanta Falcons, and the Atlanta Journal-Constitution recognized eight head high school varsity tackle football coaches across Georgia for their hard work and dedication to making a difference in student athletes' lives on and off the field. Each winning head coach received a $1,000 grant for their program, recognition from the Atlanta Falcons and the AJC, along with additional special events. The Week Three Atlanta Falcons Coach of the Week was our very own Rockdale County High School Head Football Coach, Kenderek Bonner. I will add, the AJC wrote Coach Bonner has been called more than just a coach and is a true mentor and a father figure to his players. We congratulate Coach Bonner not only for this recognition, but for leading the Rockdale County High School football team to its first winning season since 2013. Congratulations. And now, for this very good-looking group of young men to my left, our Memorial Middle School football team. So guys, I'm gonna talk about you for just a minute, so hold your seats. And then, when I call you up, you can come up, get your certificate. And I don't know how we're gonna do a group photo, but we're gonna make it happen, okay? So just stay up here somewhere when you get your certificate. All right. Tonight, we celebrate the Memorial Middle School football team for winning the New Rock Championship for the first time in two decades. The journey of the Memorial Middle School football team began at 8:30 AM on July 7, 2025, and culminated in a championship victory that reflects not only athletic excellence, but also the power of teamwork, discipline, and mentorship. Their football season kicked off with two weeks of intense conditioning, a program which they affectionately call "The County Fair." During this time, no football was allowed on the field. Instead, the athletes committed to two and a half hours each day of rigorous workout stations and running drills. This wasn't just about physical preparation, it was about building mental toughness and unity. The team adopted a powerful motto. I'm gonna let you guys say it. You know what it is? There you go. That's, you got it. Lot of mottos there. Okay, so that was just one of them. This phrase became the heartbeat of their program. They just forgot it. It reminded every player and coach that success would come not from individual talent alone, but from collective belief and accountability. Coach Kane shared that he often says, "I coach like I teach, and I teach like I coach." This philosophy carried through with the goal of not only to teach the game of football, but to mentor young men to strive for excellence in the classroom, on the field, and in life. Coach says, "We believe that character development and academic achievement go hand-in-hand with athletic success." The results speak volumes. Over the course of the season, this team scored 204 points while allowing only 56. That's an average of 26 points scored and just seven points allowed per game. They recorded two shutouts, including a dominant 26-0 victory in the championship game. The offense was led by the outstanding efforts of Carter Mingo, who scored 18 touchdowns, showcasing both skill and leadership. On defense, Sincere Darby anchored the unit with nine quarterback sacks, and setting the tone for a relentless and disciplined defense. This championship was more than a trophy. It was a testament to what happens when young people are given structure, support, and high expectations. It's a reflection of the values we instill every day in our classrooms and on our fields. Congratulations to all the players and coaches for an outstanding season. Okay, team members, you ready? Awesome. Jaleel Bowman. Come on up. Jace Burns. Ashton Butler. Drew Coleman. Gabriel Cardova. Sincere Darby. Josiah Davis. Mason Dixon. Trinity Fleellen. Jalen Gamble. Jaden Gleaton. Kaden Gober. Ronaldo Gordon. Terrence Halls. Prince Morgan Hardnut. Braylon Haskell. Trenton Holmes. Lamar Inman. Glenn Ivory. Zachary Jones. Kareem McDaniel. Tyler Mickens. Carter Mingo. Jeremiah Moore. Omari Muldrew. Tahir Muhammad. Ashton Apoku Amenquah. Kimichael Ponder. Elias Rampersan. Rempersad. Christian Scott. Jamir Smith. Kayden Thompson. Aaron Thornton. Michael Travis. Aiden Walker. Christian Witty. Micah Williams. Coach Shadarius Robinson. Coach Dalvin Denham. Coach Dr. Lonnie White. And our head coach Rodney Kane. Joshua Alaka. Manager, and what's your name? And our manager Ava Smith. Asher Walker, our second manager. And our athletic director, Coach Mann. Anybody else from Memorial that needs to be? Parents, feel free to come on up and take a picture, and we will put ours on social media as well.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so you guys, if you're tall, I need you to go to the back. If you know your tall... If you're not so tall, come to the front. Working way to the front. I know you know how to do that. Are we getting close? All right, everybody look this way so we can see your smiling face. Hold your certificates down a little bit so we see your face. Not the certificate, over your face. All right, I've got a couple blind spots here. Everybody hold still. I'll move you. All right, everyone looking forward, looking up here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Looking forward, keep smiling. Hey, you guys are champions. You should be... Ronaldo. And don't forget to open ours on social media. You can grab it there. All right, I catch up. Okay, congratulations. All right, hey, this... Three that I didn't have on my...
We will now take a five-minute recess. Put the clock up on the wall. To the board, registered speaker may not assign a year they're speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask that administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights has been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. Speakers should be professional, and we respectfully ask that you refrain from using pro...
Because at the end of the day, they are the ones that have the community power and being able to use their voice for good so that we can all come together as a Rockdale County Public School System that's thriving, that's engaging, that comes together. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Cabinet Updates. Superintendent Chester, please introduce your cabinet and provide your updates.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and good evening, Vice Chairwoman Jones, board members, and to our guests in attendance. First up this evening, we do have from the Leadership and Learning Division, Ms. Heather Tolliver, who will provide tonight's science update.
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, board members, Superintendent Chester, cabinet members, and esteemed guests. It is my pleasure to stand before you this evening to share science updates and accomplishments. The science team has been working diligently to continue our efforts to promote high-impact three-dimensional science learning and student sense-making in every science classroom. There we go. Tonight, I will discuss the 2526 Science Goals Program Highlights, the science resource adoption, and end with an acknowledgement of support. By spring 2026, Rockdale County Public Schools will increase the overall Science Weighted Achievement Score and Content Mastery by 10 points across elementary, middle, and high school levels. On the 2026 Georgia Milestone Assessment, achievement will be accomplished through professional learning, planning, and instructional support, ongoing formative assessments, and regular data cycles that embed high-leverage practices to include science sense-making, intentional use of instructional strategies, and formative assessment practices. Thank you. There we go. Thank you. I'm pressing the wrong thing. I was pressing the laser. All right. Progress will be measured through science focus walks, classroom observations and feedback, and student performance data on the district interim assessments. Action steps to support this goal include developing sample high-impact science learning experiences, supporting PLC teams to engage in intentional collaborative planning practices, and providing targeted professional learning to support the implementation of 3D science and student sense-making. These actions align with Goal Area 2 Performance Objective B to increase student growth levels and Performance Objective C to increase student achievement. The science team has been able to successfully develop high-impact science Okay, there we go. To develop high-impact science learning experiences for all Grade 5 Science units. These lessons are 30 minutes of high-impact, three-dimensional, engaging learning that includes all instructional materials. Teachers need to successfully implement the lesson. They were developed with the first-year teacher in mind and will be used as a tool to help promote quality science instruction at the elementary level. The implementation of these lessons have allowed us to see active student engagement and sense-making consistently in Grade 5 classrooms. Here, you see a sample Unit 3 lesson with students working to collect evidence to support their arguments and engaging in discourse with each other while the teacher facilitates learning. We are most excited about the student response to the lessons and are looking forward to developing similar lessons in Grade 8 and Biology. Understanding that high-impact science learning instruction begins with a high-impact science plan, our focus has also been on supporting science PLCs to intentionally and collaboratively develop learning experiences that effectively prepare students to meet the full expectation of the standards. This includes modeling best practices for science PLCs and providing tools to facilitate the planning process. In September, I host Sorry. Oh, yeah. I'm gonna go back to this one. In September, I hosted a district-level science collaborative planning workshop for biology teachers and instructional leaders. The workshop focused on key practices such as unpacking intended learning, designing unit assessments, mapping upcoming units, and planning lessons collaboratively. We also worked together to develop an upcoming lesson. During subsequent school-level PLC visits, it was evident that our time together had a positive impact on teams because they were actively using the tools and implementing the strategies introduced in the workshop. I also collaborated with the science I also collaborated with the science team to unpack an upcoming unit and clarify instructional expectations using the Godot Teacher Notes. This session was initiated after teachers reviewed interim assessment data and realized they had missed instructional opportunities in the previous unit. My goal was to support the team in being fully prepared to implement the next unit effectively and model a best practice for the team to continue to use when preparing for upcoming units. Understanding the importance of providing targeted job-embedded professional learning, we did not take any opportunity to get in front of teachers or leaders lightly. I have had the honor of being able to engage school leaders in the process of reviewing science interim data using the RCPS Data Protocol and developing a short-term action plan to respond to the data that they will commit to implementing in their buildings. This session also led to a follow-up professional learning opportunity with a focus on strengthening instructional planning and providing targeted feedback on teacher lesson plans during the October 6 Instructional Learning Day. The science team was also able to conduct our first full-day Saturday workshop with Grade 5 Science teachers with the goal of supporting them in the process of adequately preparing for and implementing the sample high-impact science learning experiences. The session began with teachers unpacking instructional expectations using the Godot Teacher Notes and developing the unit assessment, and ended with teachers presenting the lesson for peer feedback, which we called "Being the Spark to Promote Student Learning." As you can see, teachers responded positively to this learning experience, and I will also note that 100% of the participants either agreed or strongly agreed that they will use the tools provided during their learning experiences back in their school-based PLCs. The day was highly engaging for teachers, and we look forward to hosting our second session in January of 2026 with two others to follow in February and March. Finally, the science is hosting a resource adoption and vendor solicitations are currently underway. The solicitation letter has been live since October 24 and will be available until November 24. Vendors will be notified on November 24 of their ability to be able to present in front of the Resource Adoption Committee, which will begin on December 10 and last until December 11, with a public review beginning on January 5 and leading going through February the 6. That concludes our time. I want to say thank you for your continued support in the science program and with your help in continuing and our continued efforts in educating and empowering all students by meeting their individual academic, behavioral, emotional, and social needs to become productive and thriving members of the Global Society. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Formative. You may mention that, and we already knew this, that the goal is to increase the science scores by 10 points. Is that correct? So I know that we do progress reporting or whatever. Is that what you call it? Well, we kind of do benchmarks and to see what the students are.
Yes, ma'am. We have interim assessments.
Do we know where they are as of today?
As of today, where students are, well, like I said, what we do is we collect the interim data, which was administered in September. Our next round will be in December. But in the interim, we do review formative assessments with individual schools, and we're looking, we review those assessments with them. We look at their items. We try to make sure that those assessments are aligned, so assisting schools and making sure that they have produced the best tools to make the best decisions on. So we are going into schools specifically in secondary, but we're definitely going into schools and reviewing that assessment data with them to see where their students are at that point and help them to make those plans moving forward, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. We keep track of our calendar as we go throughout the year, so we start our year off thinking about all of our professional learning days that we have. And I'm just being honest and transparent with you. I definitely had a conversation with Dr. Richardson on an objective that I have to sit with my teacher team and really engage in some deep think-tank discussion about how to really capitalize on our professional learning time that we have in the interim of our professional learning days because we recognize that there's a need to really be able to consistently provide that professional learning, so that is definitely on my radar. And we've already worked out our budget for that, and we are working to do that. Thank you for the question.
Is there any vertical alignment with the cross-grade levels?
There are goals for vertical alignment. I will tell you specifically, that work is in the space of we're working with our pre-AP group specifically, but I will also say, and working vertically with our teams, it's really about making sure that our lower-level grades are really implementing those science and engineering practices because that's actually what transfers from one grade level to the next. But when we're thinking about vertical alignment for a biology team, getting them together with our 7th-grade team, but that's really all a part of that think-tank and making sure that we are consistently providing that professional learning. So we are in that space of really thinking intentionally about that.
And Ms. Tolliver, if you don't mind to kind of tie the two questions together, talk through the science plan in terms of how you identify the schools of support, how you break that down, and then you provide that targeted professional learning based on what that data has indicated.
Absolutely.
I want to talk a little bit about that plan. I know you have a strong support.
Yes, ma'am. So we definitely are, like, being the science team, and it's just me and one other person. As you can see, Kristi, we sit and we collect very specific data on the schools and the support that we provide to those schools. Because what we want to do is we want to make sure that we're intentional about our rotation of support because we are such a limited team. So we use factors like the number of new teachers in the building, whether or not there's a new leader leading that school, and Georgia Milestone data as well as our interim data at this point to make decisions of support for our schools. And in that most recent iteration, what we've concluded is that really all of our schools are in need of support. There are some schools who need a little bit more for various reasons, but we are continuing that kind of same rotation within our schools in both elementary and secondary just to make sure that they're getting that specific targeted support. One of which is making sure that when we're going to those schools, we're walking with leaders in the classrooms to help them to be able to recognize what that effective instruction should look like so that they can pick up that task and do it when we're not present. And again, like I said and mentioned in our presentation, making sure that we are really being intentional in that professional learning space because it has to start with a good plan, and we want to make sure that in that professional learning space, teachers are intentional and they are collaborative. So we are providing those tools, and we want to make sure that we see that happening. So we rotate through those PLCs as well on a consistent basis. But, you know, we target, we kind of layer our schools by intense support, focus support, and monitor support. And those monitor support schools are those schools that we were probably getting to see once a month because they're showing that they don't necessarily need that support, and their data is trending upward. But like I said, right now, we have, our schools are mostly in an intense support space where they're getting at least a bi-weekly check. So. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
You say you do a check. What does the support look like? Like, give me an example of what that might look like.
Well, and I can just go to the example that I had in the presentation with Edwards Middle School where, you know, I went into the team after their interim assessment data. We looked at the interim assessment data. We looked at those items very specifically, and we had very intense and deep conversations about what happened instructionally that produced the results that we were able to see. This is when the teachers really saw that there were some or realized that there were some instructional gaps that were occurring in that instruction from the previous unit. And so I made it a point to go in the very next week to let's sit down, let's have this conversation. You have a new unit coming up, so let's really look at what these teacher notes are saying so that you're clear about how you can implement this instruction without those gaps to make sure that students are getting the learning experiences that they need. That's one of those supports. Another support is I worked with a PLC in developing their their common unit assessment where, again, we sat down, we looked at these items, and we're making sure that they're aligned with the standards, that they're aligned to the teaching expectations in the teacher notes so that teachers have a strong tool that they're going to be able to use to make good decisions about instruction. And of course, in that space, I always encourage the PLCs to go ahead and have a remediation plan for when you get the data. You don't have to wait until you get the data to have the plan. You can have that plan upfront. So those are just some examples. Other examples would be just going in and doing walkthroughs with leaders to just having those conversations with leaders about what that instruction should look like. We have a very specific checklist that we provide to leaders that is a simplified version of our continuum, our focus walk continuum that they can use as a check to see, and they should be using it for their lesson planning process, how they provide feedback on that lesson plan, but also how they're monitoring the instruction of the implemented lesson. Additionally, I just recently rolled out Science Sparks for secondary, which are just kind of short, brief tools that will help leaders and teachers when they're in that PLC process to really hone in on what they need to be focused on. It includes instructional strategies as well as strong and weak examples of student work.
So now, do the teachers take this information and do it, go over it during the planning time? And when you identify an opportunity to improve the instruction, are the teachers going back to reteach? Since we already know, we identified that there is an issue, are we taking time or are we monitoring whether or not they're going back to reteach that to the students? Because if you identified there was an opportunity and we're not going back to teach it, then you may not have as many kids, but I guess when you do your progress reporting, you might see it.
And that is the expectation. And of course, when we monitor, anytime I'm going into a school to provide support, I collect data on what we're monitoring. So whether it's their lesson planning, whether it's their instructional practices in the classroom walks or even in their PLC process, we collect that data, and as a team, we discuss that. But it is absolutely the expectation that teachers are implementing that instruction. And the way that we really support that shift in that, in the classrooms, we really support the leaders in making sure that they can make sure that teachers are implementing that. Because in our rotation, it's hard to be there every week because of our limited staffing. So being able to support leaders and making sure that they're going in and doing that is really the ultimate objective. So we really try to coach leaders in that space.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much for your report.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good one.
Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, remaining board members, Superintendent Chester, cabinet, and guests. Tonight, I'll be bringing the preliminary financial reports for the month of October. The revenue for October was $13.5 million. Year-to-date, we're at $44.3 million, and that represented 19.5% of the budget. Revenues this time last year were $11.1 for the month, $41.6 year-to-date, representing 19.1% of the budget. Expenditures are $19 million for October, $73.5 million year-to-date, representing 31.7% of the budget. Expenditures last year, $17.7 million for the month, $71.1 million year-to-date, representing 32% of the budget. Our opening commerces are $3,111,917. On our fund balance, we are at a negative $215,749. And last year this time, we're at a negative $950,607 in the month of October. So not quite as bad this year. On our balance sheet, our assets are at $9,723,235. Liabilities are $9,938,984. And our fund balance again is a negative $215,749. I bring to you tonight an action item on the FY27 Budget Calendar. Time to get started again already. The recommendation is the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the proposed FY27 Budget Adoption Calendar as presented. The rationale is the budget calendar provides the system and community with a budget timeline for critical budget processes, and is needed to ensure we complete the budget process in a timely fashion. This calendar and the processes presented are very similar to past budget calendars. As we have done in the past years, we will use a budget committee that will be responsible for the preparation of the system's budget. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, just a few remarks tonight. I do want to congratulate again our schools. We want to recognize, I know the school teams were here, but Principal Johnson and the Sims Elementary School Team for being named that literacy leader school, as well as Principal Veer and the Lorraine Elementary School Team for being recognized as another literacy leader school. We saw Dr. Stoudemire and the Memorial Middle School Team for being recognized as that math literacy leader, so we're excited about them attaining those recognitions as well. This week, we also honored our veterans through meaningful events across the district. This past Saturday, the Rockdale County High School Marching Band and ROTC Unit proudly represented us in the Veterans Day Parade, and I know many of our board members were in attendance as well. So I do want to acknowledge our band director, Mr. Watson, our assistant band director at Rockdale County High School, Mr. Harris, Master Sergeant Harris, and Master Sergeant Anglin Galde for preparing and supporting the students for that parade. And it was a lot of fun to see our kids leading that parade throughout our community. And then on Tuesday, General Ray Davis Middle School also hosted an exceptional Veterans Day program under the direction of Ms. Katie King. And so we were honored that our board members were there, and we also had a visit from our state school superintendent, Mr. Richard Woods, and Mr. Matt Cardoza from the Georgia Department of Education, and they joined us and showed their support as we recognize and honored our veterans here in our community. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the quick and professional response of the Shoal Creek Elementary Team last week when we had a student who experienced medical distress. In this case, this young woman actually got a bottle cap lodged in her throat. And thanks to the immediate actions of the assistant principal, the nurse, Ms. Davenport, the school staff, all of the teachers there, Mr. Pittman here from the central office, and the emergency management system, we were able to get that child safe. She received that care that she needed, and that bottle cap was dislodged from her throat. So we were glad that they were able to provide that care immediately because we know that vigilance made all the difference in saving that young woman's life. And so very proud of how quickly they responded and how they responded to lend that care. I do want to also share that we started our second round of our superintendent's advisory council meetings. Last week, we had the parent advisory council meeting at Edwards Middle School, and there we had the school chorus come and perform for our parents, which was exciting for our parents to see the fine arts program there at Edwards Middle School. And so I'd like to thank the choral director, Ms. Harris, and their students for that wonderful performance. We also had the middle school's student advisory council last week, and then this week, even yesterday, we had the high school's student advisory council meeting. And so the topics for this month with our young people included the accreditation process, but we also had a chance to talk to them about social, emotional learning. We talked to them about bullying. We talked to them about time management. We even talked to them about student clubs and organizations. And all of those topics were topics that they told us they wanted to know more about. And so after each meeting, we solicit their feedback, and we ask them, what is it that you want to know more about? And when we had our first round in September, those were the things that they told us that they were interested in. And so I was excited to be able to engage in those ongoing conversations with our young people, our middle school and our high school students this past week. And then forthcoming, we will have our elementary round so we can talk to the young elementary students as well. I do also want to share that as we talk about student and stakeholder feedback, that next week, we will hold our community forum. That's next Tuesday, the 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Rockdale Career Academy. So again, we don't want to just talk to some stakeholders. We invite all of our stakeholders to come and be a part. We were gathering that feedback and that communication mechanisms through both the advisory council meetings and opportunities such as the forum. So we do encourage our public and our parents, community members to attend next Tuesday again at RCA. So thank you for your continued support, and that concludes my remarks tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Chester. And also, I just wanted to point out, your report, it was great. But you know, we had a heritage high school, Mr. Steven Sparkman. He saw on the National Anthem and God Bless America and the Walker Heroes program on Tuesday. So we have a lot of great talent here in Rockdale County, so just to add that to your report. Just shine out, let our students shine. Okay. Next, the cabinet has provided numerous presentations on the information. I would like to ask the board members to please review the information. Please review the October 2025 Board Minutes and provide an edit to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There's no old business or new business to discuss. The cabinet has provided an overview of the action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action item to be placed on consent agenda?
So moved. Janie Jones.
Can I get a second?
Second, Justin.
A motion to consider action item under the consent agenda at the regular session has been made by Vice Chair Janie Jones and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor. The motion is approved by a 7-0 vote. Mr. Cox has requested time to discuss school visits during the board discussion. I now recognize Mr. Cox, and you'll defer to him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When Ms. Tolliver gave her presentation, I understood everything she was talking about because when myself and Board Member Kenny went with Superintendent Chester a few weeks ago to do school visits, she actually did what they're referring to in these focus walks. She did a focus walk. And we were able to observe, and then Ms. Chester explained to us what she was looking for. She explained how they were teaching to the lesson plan, and she showed us, you know, sometimes there were deficiencies, and she said that they would correct this. And I found it very interesting because as a non-educator, they were actually, at one point, they were using some technology to do a lesson with it, and Board Member Kenny and I thought it was the greatest thing on the planet. Then Ms. Chester informed, no, they weren't using that technology correctly. So she informed us, this is what they should have done. But then we all got to see, you know, when we had a presentation a few weeks ago of the AMARA? We got to see the AMARA program in use, and it was fantastic to watch those kids use that and how they were interactive. And then as a board member, I get to see the things that I vote on, and our staff comes up and talk about, and I get to understand it on a one-on-one basis. And to me, it's very important to do these visits with the superintendent so that I have a better understanding of what we're doing it, what we're doing and why we're doing it. Because it matters that our kids are getting the best of the best. And if we, as board members, observe that, then we can talk to the members of the community about it in one-on-one conversations and make sure that they know that the Rockdale County Public School System is looking out for the best interest of our students and their education. So that's what I got to say. And again, Superintendent Chester, I really thank you for taking me along on these walkthroughs and letting me observe the classroom so I know when these fine people give the presentations, I understand them.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation?
So moved, Justin.
A motion going to executive session has been made by Mr. Justin Kenny and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor. The motion is approved by a 7-0 vote. Do I hear a motion to approve legal representation for Stephanie Burke and Alex Jacob in pending litigation in accordance with Board policy BBE?
Second, Janie.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Vice Chair Janie Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved by a 7-0 vote. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
Second, Akita.
A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Akita Palmer. All in favor? The meeting is concluded at 7:16 PM with a 7-0 vote. Good night.
Good night.